Good morning. I will get started. Felicia will be joining us a bit late. Deedee DiAdamo is not here today. She's in the valley. And Tam is in New Orleans, and Steve is in Israel. So it is a small family today. This is a hearing, not a workshop. It's a hearing. We will simply be taking your comments. We will not be making any decisions today. So that is important. So let me get started. I do have to stick to the script for this, so I will do that as quickly as possible. Good morning, and welcome to this public hearing for the receipt of oral comments on the proposed adoption of California Code of Regulations Title 22, Sections 64300, 64305, 64310, and 64315 for the drinking water program fees, which would be contained in a new chapter located in the California Code of Regulations, Title 22, Division 4, Chapter 14.5. I am Franz Bive Weber, Vice Chair of the State Water Resources Control Board, and soon to be joined by a fellow board member and Chair Felicia Marcus. The staff today, actually, we're missing Tom Howard as well. He has a family emergency. But we have Chief Deputy Directors Eric Oppenheimer and Jonathan Bishop, and Chief Counsel Michael Lauffer, Deputy Director John Russell, David Cecarelli. Should that "C" be soft at the beginning?
That was correct.
Okay. My Italian-ophile husband would ask me. And Ryan Wilson, all from the Division of Administrative Services. Now go through emergency evacuation procedures. Please look around and identify the two exits closest to you in the event of a fire alarm. We're required to gather up our valuables and evacuate this room immediately. Please obey -- we will evacuate to Cesar Chavez Park, which is across the street, kind of catty-corner across the street. Please obey all traffic signals and be careful when crossing the street. I sound like a mother, don't I? Oh, well. This hearing is being held in accordance with Government Code Section 11346.8 and the notice of proposed regulatory action published in the California Regulatory Register on April 29, 2016, to receive input on the proposed drinking water program fee regulations. If you intend to speak on this issue, please fill out a blue speaker card that should be located in the back and give it to the clerk located in the front of the room. If you're not sure if you want to speak, fill out the card and mark it if necessary. The deadline for submission of written comments on the draft regulations is today, June 22, by 5:00 p.m. If you have already submitted written comments to the board, please briefly summarize your comments when it is your turn to speak. Time limits may be imposed on oral comments, if necessary, to allow all participants the opportunity to be heard. The State Water Board will not take action on this issue today. This hearing is being webcasted and recorded, so please speak into the microphones. There will not be sworn testimony. I will call the speakers in the order I received the blue cards. When you come to the podium, please state your name slowly and identify the organization that you represent, if any. And importantly, please be sure to turn off all cell phones and beepers during this meeting. We will have first a staff presentation by John Russell, and then public comments. And so, Mr. Russell, would you like to proceed?
Thank you, and good morning. Janine, can you put up the -- okay. And then do you guys have the clicker? Sorry. Well, that's getting up on the screen. Before we start, I do want to acknowledge my staff on this, David and Ryan and Justin. They did all the heavy lifting on this, or most of the heavy lifting. And then I would also like to thank and acknowledge the stakeholders themselves. This has been a particularly professional and civil group to work with, and I personally sincerely appreciate that. I have to swear. No. There we go. Okay. Before we get into the changes to the regulations proposed, I want to talk just a little bit about why we're here. And hopefully, my introductory comments here will be brief. The main reason we're here today is to take input from the stakeholders. So last year, the Senate passed Senate Bill 83, and that was really a landscape change or a sea change for us in the way we do our fee-setting process for the drinking water fees. It did a number of things, important things. Among those, it sunsetted the existing fee structure. Here in about a week, it'll go away. That was a signal to us from the legislature that they wanted us to take another look at how the fees are set. And it pretty much gave us a clean slate to work from. It allowed us to go to the emergency rulemaking process, which is what our other fees are set on, our drinking -- our water quality fees and our water rights fees. And that was really important, too, and I'll talk about that in a minute. But it really did change the landscape for us quite a bit. Some of the implications of Senate Bill 83, like I said, it allowed us to go to a new fee structure or look at the existing fee structure and determine if we wanted to continue with that fee structure or go towards another fee structure. And in our conversations with the legislature, we indicated that we probably would want to be going to some sort of new fee structure other than the existing one, which was a complicated, sort of a fee-for-service, sort of a subsidized fee. But go away from that cost-recovery fee to another one that we believed would be more equitable to the stakeholders. A lot of the things that the Senate Bill 83 allows us to do simply by allowing us to go to emergency fee or emergency rulemaking procedures, is it allows us to be more nimble and flexible in a number of areas. Things come up. Before, in the cost-recovery model, we were pretty much -- our services were chasing the funding, and it didn't allow us to be as flexible as we needed to be to address emergency situations or things that would come up on smaller systems. A lot of the fees were generated from larger systems, and it sort of forced us to work on them to some extent. And then, as we said before, it allows us to, in re-looking at the fee structure, to reduce, at least in our minds, reduce the burden on the small water systems.
Are we talking small or are we talking disadvantaged or severely disadvantaged?
And I'll talk a little bit about severely disadvantaged in a minute. But in general, we're just talking about the smaller water, public water systems. Those with fewer connections. As I indicated before, we are moving away from the fee-for-service model to a per-connection model. We had a workshop this winter. You heard about that. We presented four or five options. The consensus with the stakeholders and us, we believe, was to go to the model that we'll present today. And what we're discussing today is within that construct of a per-connection fee, where the tiers should be, the cutoffs, the splits, that type of thing. So like I said before, Senate Bill 83, really the primary side effect of that or implication for us, was it allowed us a lot more flexibility. So we have that agility now to deal with the changing workload. We have the ability to deal -- the agility to deal with changing budgetary conditions within the state, changing economic conditions. And that's simply a product of us being able to set our fees or reexamine our fees every year on a fairly nimble basis with the emergency rulemaking process. Just as an example, this year, the legislature, drinking water was a hot topic with them. Through various budget change proposals, approximately $7 million was added to the drinking water fee. Actually, a little more than that because the legislature actually came in late in the session and added four or five new positions that weren't on anybody's radar until May rolled around. So I'm going to go through the proposed regulations really quickly. I'm not going to read this, but it added a couple new definitions on severely disadvantaged communities and wholesalers, and I'll talk a little bit more about those in a minute. And it changed, like I said before, the fee schedule. It moved away. We're moving away from a fee-for-service to a per-connection type of approach. And this table, I will talk a little bit more about this in detail, but it defines the fees that we are going towards. Two of the fees, the existing fees, we're not proposing to change. Those are the non-transient non-community and the transient non-community. A non-transient non-community, those are things like rest stops, campgrounds, resorts. And a transient non-community is churches, youth camps, seasonal businesses, that type of thing. And we're proposing to leave those alone for right now because we had so many things that we were changing. We thought we would just -- those seem to be fine for right now, and we'll take another look at those in the future. As I said before, along with the definition of a severely disadvantaged community, the proposed regulations also give us the ability to charge a reduced fee to severely disadvantaged communities. And those disadvantaged communities or severely disadvantaged communities would be defined or identified by the fee payers themselves, and they would certify to us that their community is a severely disadvantaged community. And if necessary, we could request documentation to demonstrate that. The proposed regulations add a provision that fees should be paid within 45 days, but it also gives us the ability to delay that 45-day payment period if the fee payer can show good cause. And that's at our discretion in general, though, without pre-assuming anything. We tend to be service-oriented, so if there are hardship provisions, we're certainly willing to work with the fee payers. So I wanted to talk about the proposed fee schedule a little bit in detail, and this is where we've gotten the most feedback so far. It's a very, very simple diminishing tier type of arrangement. We went with a simple arrangement simply because it's easier for us to administer, on the one hand, and it's easier for the fee payers to understand and administer, on the other side. We deliberately went with only a two-times multiplier in the per-service connection. So if you look at the top of that table, the communities of 100 or fewer service connections would pay a flat fee of $200. 101 to 1,000 service connections would be $4 per connection. And then, as you go above 1,001 service connections, it goes down to $2 per service connections. And then, again, in a bid to be equitable to everybody, we went with a two-times multiplier for that. Severely disadvantaged communities have a similar setup, but they're approximately half of what the normal rate payers would pay. Then the other thing that we're proposing to change is the fees paid by the wholesalers. That's going to -- we're proposing a flat fee or a base fee of $6,000 plus $1.36 for each million gallons. And that would be based on a three-year average of their total delivery. And again, that was designed to get us away from the fee-for-service model and to help balance our revenues a little bit. So probably the most significant comments we've gotten back are the proposed fees based on the per-connection fee. The larger ones, it's just a mathematical thing. If you have a lower number of connection fees, you're going to pay a lower fee. And if you have a higher number of connection fees, you're going to pay more. So really quickly, just a visual examination of the table, you can quickly see that the number of systems were skewed very heavily towards the smaller number of systems. Most of our systems are down in the lower ranges, 1,000 or below. And it's not shown on this table, but sort of inverse to that is most of our service connections are in the higher number of systems. Those, I think the top 10 systems in the state encompass 25% of the service connections. So it's sort of in -- the two are inverse of each other. As you can see, we -- our proposal keeps things pretty much status quo at around 16,000 service connections or below. Below 16,000 service connections, systems will either pay less than they have been paying or approximately the same. Above 16,000 is the inflection point, and at that point, it starts to change fairly rapidly, again, simply based on the mathematical construct of the fee times the number of service connections. We -- and I did want to point out, we did a number of stakeholder meetings while we were rolling this out throughout the state. I think we had at least four or five. And as you can probably guess, the smaller systems, who would be paying a lesser fee, were happy with this. The larger systems, who were paying an increased fee, were less happy with it. So the overall impact, we have about 1,900 community water systems in the state. And based on the fee schedule that we're proposing, approximately 1,700 of them will pay, will see a decrease in their fees. Again, like I said, the number of systems is heavily skewed towards smaller systems. But there are about 250 systems that will see an increase in their fees under our proposal. So we're at the end of our 45-day comment period in this hearing itself. As member Bive Weber indicated, is part of the public comment period. So any comments we get today, we'll consider. So far, we've received seven or eight comments, and unfortunately, I can't summarize those very well for you because we just got them yesterday. But for the most part, we have been talking to stakeholders, particularly CMUA and Aqua. And I think you'll probably hear from them in a minute. And they -- their comment was basically they have an alternate fee schedule that they're going to propose. It's still within the construct of a diminishing tier framework, but they have some offsets in their tiers, the number of tiers and the breakpoints and things like that. So it was a little bit hard for me to put a timeline to this because we're at a decision point, because we're reaching the end of the public comment period. So by the end of today, we'll have all the comments. We'll spend a little bit of time, consider those, go through them, get back to you on what they are, summarize them. And then there's three ways that we can go. If the board decides to stick with the existing proposal, no changes at all, we can stick to our timeframe. And just for planning purposes, we had planned to bring this to the September 20th board meeting. Again, I'm not presupposing what the comments might be or what the outcome might be, but we did need to do some planning rather than just say, "We'll deal with it when the public comment period is over." So we are planning to come to you before -- or on September 20th with the other fee changes as well. So if there are no changes, we can meet that schedule with no problem. If there are substantial changes, the board decides to make substantial changes, and we need to have a 15-day comment period, we also built that into our schedule. So if we do another 15-day public comment period based on changes to the regulations, we should still be able to meet the September 20th date. That was part of our planning process as well. If there are major changes and we need to go out, basically restart the process and go out to a 45-day public comment period, the September 20th date, it becomes very questionable. In theory, on paper, we can meet it. There's some variables that aren't under our control in that. There's a review by finance that has to take place. And so if I were a betting man, I would say we probably would not hit the September 20th if we go out to a 45-day comment period.
Well, but the issue is whatever we decide we want to do is --
Correct.
-- should lead, not the timeline.
Correct. Based on the comments we receive and things like that. The Office of Administrative Law has gone to a quarterly implementation of new regulations. So if there are no changes or a 15-day comment period, the regulations will become effective January 1st. If we go out for a longer 45-day comment period, If we go out for a longer 45-day comment period, and we're likely to go to an April 1st implementation period. And I'm mentioning that just because at some point, my, I change hats and I'm now the personnel, the chief personnel officer for the state and I have to pay some people. So sooner or later, this is why we're being a little bit aggressive on this. We would like to collect the fees so we have the money in house to pay our staff. We can deal with it. There's options to deal with it, but it's just simpler if we collect the fees and are able to pay staff out of that. That was pretty much my presentation. I said it was going to be brief. We've already talked at length in our previous hearing in the wintertime about the various options and the implications. And again, we're primarily here to hear what the stakeholders have to say. But I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
I have no questions and Felicia is here now and she'll take over. Do we have blue cards?
Great. Thank you all. Sorry I was late. Thank you. Okay, great. Okay. I think we can go with five, yeah, five minutes. I'll do, I'll give you an alert for the next three. First, we have Adana Ortega from the California Association of Mutual Water Companies. Hello. Didn't recognize you with the new look. Followed by Adam Robyn from the Association of California Water Agencies, followed by Danielle Blasset from the California Municipal Utilities Association.
Morning Chair Marcus, Vice Chair Spivey Weber. Happy to be with you. My name is Adana Ortega. I am testifying on behalf of the California Association of Mutual Water Companies. We also go by CalMutuals. We represent about 400 mutual water companies and small systems across California. And I'm here to testify about the proposed fees to support the Safe Drinking Water Program. We support the board's effort to stabilize funding for the Safe Drinking Water Program. We recognize that larger systems represented by other organizations stand for fee payer equity, given that they may use less assistance than smaller systems in older, smaller, and poorer communities, which are typical of our membership. We urge the board to weigh comments from small system advocates and representatives about what comprises fairness. The issue of equity should be viewed from a higher level benchmark. Mutual water companies serve approximately 1.1 million residents in the state. Our residents pay state income tax, professional taxes, business taxes at the same rates that persons served by larger systems pay. Those taxes support the state's debt repayment on water bonds that have mostly benefited residents who are served by larger water systems. To mitigate any potential adverse impact on larger systems from the new rates, the state might consider adding more categories of service with a minimum fee for all systems and additional fees past a certain threshold for service connections for larger systems. The Metropolitan Water District of Southern California, for example, and others impose such a fee on a universal basis called the readiness to surcharge. The philosophy behind this charge is that everyone has a stake in the state's ability to reliably administer the Safe Drinking Water Program, whether they regularly use the components of the program or not. Lastly, we also believe that it's important that all governmental bodies that are engaged in regulating public water systems, especially small systems, benefit in some way from the proposed charges. Thus, in order to better assist smaller, older, and poor water systems, we recommend that the state board consider some mechanism to pass through funds to county health departments who currently oversee systems with 200 connections or less. So we appreciate your consideration of our comments and would welcome any questions. Thank you very much for your efforts.
Mr. Robyn, followed by Ms. Blasset, followed by Brad Coffey from the Metropolitan Water District of Southern California. Hi.
Morning Chair Marcus, Vice Chair Spivey Weber. My name is Adam Robyn. I'm with the Association of California Water Agencies. And we appreciate this opportunity to comment on the Water Board's draft fee regulations for drinking water systems. Aqua represents hundreds of public water agencies that are responsible for supplying the public with safe, high-quality drinking water. And we're keenly aware that this regulation affects each and every one of those systems. While Aqua supports adequate funding for the state's drinking water program, we do have significant concerns with the draft fee regulations. We've submitted detailed written comments. And in my testimony this morning, I'm just going to take a few minutes to briefly emphasize what I think are two key points. The draft fee regulation's stated goal is to recover sufficient funding to support the drinking water program's increased budget authorization amount, and it is a substantial increase, for fiscal years 2016, 17, and to create a more stable and consistent source of funding for the program moving forward. And while we recognize and agree with many of those goals and certainly recognize that the fee structure has to support the budget authorization amount for this year, we are concerned that the draft fee regulations don't equitably allocate the fee increases that many water systems will be experiencing. For many large water systems, as we heard this morning, the draft fee regulations would dramatically increase the fees that those systems are paying. In some cases, those increases are over 1,000%. With the costs of the overall drinking water program increasing and fees for many large water systems increasing by orders of magnitude, we are concerned with any reduction of fees for any small water systems, setting aside severely disadvantaged communities, the provisions that were included in the Water Board proposal, which we support. So utilizing data provided by state Water Board staff, Aqua and other drinking water system representatives have created an alternative option. Critically, the alternative recovers the same amount in fees from large water systems, but it takes into account four key considerations. First, the option that we presented, the alternative, allocates fee increases more equitably among large water systems by introducing additional tiers of de-escalating per-connection fees. Secondly, the option that we put together maintains the existing fees paid by small water systems since 2009. While we recognize the interest in not seeing small water systems pay more than similarly situated large systems, which was an unhappy consequence under the way that the fee-for-structure was currently organized, we do think it's appropriate to maintain fees for small water systems at the level they've been at since 2009, especially considering point three here, which is that we are incorporating and encouraging the board to adopt fee relief provisions for severely disadvantaged communities. Fourth and finally, going back to the stakeholder process that we've engaged in for over a year now and the input that we heard from board members and board staff at the November 2015 workshop on this issue, we have crafted our proposal to ensure that it's based on per-connection, a per-connection model, and that it's simple and easy to understand and has per-connection fee disparities that aren't as great as under some previous proposals we put together. So we'd encourage you to take a look at the water community option that we put together. It's detailed in Aqua's comment letter. And we'd encourage you to revise the draft regulations to include that option as you look towards adoption. The second point I want to emphasize this morning is the need for the program to retain and enhance its ability to provide accounting of drinking water program priorities and staff time and resource allocation decisions, both to the board and to the public water systems you all serve. We have a couple suggestions that are detailed in our comment letter on this point. The first is that we'd encourage the board to maintain and to continue to use the DART time accounting system. Currently, under fee-for-service, large water systems, and when I say large water systems, I mean systems with more than 1,000 connections, are billed on fee-for-service. In order to make that happen, the drinking water program keeps track of staff time through the DART system, which is an accounting system. We think that it's important, even moving away from fee-for-service, that the DART system be maintained. We think for you all, it'll allow the program to engage in a running evaluation of where staff time and allocation, staff time is being allocated and where resources are being dedicated. But for water system, it's important that they be able to understand the service that they're receiving for their fee dollars, regardless of how those fees are assessed. Secondly, and consistent with that, we're encouraging the board to track and report on key drinking water program performance metrics. We know that the board is actively developing metrics related to the work that you're doing with severely, with disadvantaged communities that may lack access to safe drinking water. We're encouraging you to do something similar for all drinking water systems so you can understand in a public setting where the drinking water program is, where they're spending their resources. And, you know, being in a public setting, that would also give water systems an opportunity to provide feedback to you all. Third and finally, we encourage you to ensure that implementation of any revisions to the fee schedule are implemented in a way that is responsive to fee payers' concerns. You know, many, many water agencies have already done their budgets for fiscal year 2016, 17. Substantial increases might require them to go back to their decision-makers. So we have suggestions in our comment letter that would basically allow the board to be flexible in how you implement the fee increases. So with that, I'd like to thank the board members, thank staff for all of their work with us on this issue and would encourage you to act on the suggestions outlined in our comment letter.
I have one question, and that is, have you discussed this idea of keeping the smaller, or the, not the severely disadvantaged, but the smaller systems that had seen a decrease based on staff recommendations, but would stay statics, would stay the same? Have you discussed that with your members in the various regions that you represent?
Absolutely. We, you know, we've discussed these, the proposal with as broad a segment of our membership as possible. That work will always continue. You know, we have hundreds of public agency members, so we certainly can't reach out to every single one of them on every single issue. That said, we've made every opportunity and every effort to reach out to our membership. I think it's broadly recognized as fair for those systems, those fees to maintain at the current level, you know, recognizing that for severely disadvantaged communities where those fees can represent a real hardship, fee relief is appropriate. One other point, if I might just take a few more seconds to build on your question, is the fact that-
You get points for sending your comments early, so I could actually read them before they-
As I said, you know, one consequence of the previous structure of the fee-for-service arrangement was that some small systems, let's call them large, small water systems with close to 1,000 connections, were paying close to $6,000 a year in and year out. And for certain large systems, depending on the amount of service they received, they may not have paid a fee even remotely coming close to $6,000 per year. So in our fee proposal, as is consistent with the Water Board staff proposal, no water system that's larger than a smaller water system will ever pay a fee that's less. In other words, every water system pays $6 per connection for their first 1,000 connections. And then depending on how the de-escalating fees are structured, additional connections above that amount will pay whatever the rate might be, which we think is a critical change.
Thank you.
I did, the DART, and I'm not sure if this is something that you all maintain or if the Division of Drinking Water maintains it, but will we continue with the DART system? Is that-
That's our intention, yes. It provides us quite a bit of information for our internal management decisions. So yes, we do intend to do that.
And the metrics issue, the drinking water metrics-
That's more of a program, but from our perspective, from the fee payer or administrative, we don't have any issue with that either.
That's a bigger conversation.
Eric, is that, is the, for Eric, I guess?
It's for Greg now.
Is, oh, is it Greg now?
Greg now.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it is Greg, that's, or Oema, I should say, that's taken over management of the performance report. But actually, we did, as of last fiscal year, start incorporating performance measures, not targets, but measures for the drinking water program, for the things like number of inspections versus number of facilities, so we can get a sense of the percentage of drinking water facilities that are being inspected each fiscal year and then the number of drinking water permits that are up to date each year. And we'll be expanding on those moving forward, or I should say, Oema will be expanding on those moving forward.
But we are one big family, so it'll be we.
Yeah. Well, we're all getting better at the whole issue of finding adequate and effective performance measures that don't eat your brain. You know, ones that are useful. There's a judgment there that's not, it's hard to find the sweet spot sometimes.
And there is an advisory group that meets regularly with the Division of Drinking Water that Cindy chairs. And so this is the sort of thing that probably should be circulated through that group as well.
I agree. And I would just say that we're keenly sensitive to the fact that, you know, there are time pressures here. Our comment with, as they relate to these, you know, performance metrics and, you know, exactly specifying how DART accountings might be made available to systems, is for the board to provide direction to staff in the resolution adopting the regulation, because it's more of sort of a policy directive, and not to make a change necessarily to the regulation.
Thank you very much.
Very much.
Blasset, followed by Mr. Coffey, followed by Francois Rodigari from San Jose Water.
Danielle Blasset with the California Municipal Utilities Association. Chair Marcus, Vice Chair Spivey Weber, thank you for the time today. I do want to associate our comments with the Association of California Water Agencies and Mr. Robyn. But I did also want to thank staff for the very transparent and collaborative process that we've been working with them on for the past year. It's definitely something we appreciate. And throughout the transfer and now with the division at the State Water Board, we really appreciate in various processes how that's worked. And so I really wanted to offer my appreciation for that. Just a couple of additional points. You know, as I mentioned, we do support the water community option, but also, as I mentioned with the Intended Use Plan yesterday, we feel as though the federal grants that are part of the program are essential parts of the program and we really want to see those continue and be maximized. So both the grant that is from the federal government and the state program management set aside, we want to make sure that those continue as long as the federal government is willing to give the state money. We want to make sure that that is accepted and utilized so that it works with our drinking water systems. And then also, one of the pieces that was in the statute had to do with a prudent reserve for the drinking water program. Of course, that is a key part of the program, a fiscal sustainability, and we want to make sure that that is included in the fee structure. But we do want to make sure that as the structure is reviewed each year, that that's a conversation that our members can have and stakeholders can have with the department as well, just to make sure that there's a, there's an equity between fiscal responsibility and the fee payers' structure, because of course, our agencies are responsible to their rate payers as well. So I think that's it. And I apologize, we didn't get our comments to you early, so.
I can't wait to read them.
I know. Thank you very much.
Coffey, followed by Mr. Rodigari, followed by Jack Hawks from the California Water Association. Mr. Coffey?
Good morning. My name is Brad Coffey. On behalf of the Metropolitan Water District of Southern California, I appreciate this opportunity to comment on the proposed fee regulations. As the nation's largest water wholesaler, Metropolitan and its member agencies serve nearly 19 million consumers in Southern California. Metropolitan recognizes the importance of a stable and sustainable revenue source to oversee and assist public water systems. However, the proposed drinking water fee is problematic. Large systems, both wholesale and retail, possess regulatory economies of scale due to our investment in staff, water quality expertise, and internal controls. As a result, Metropolitan supports the request for declining rate tiers as service connections increase. Although California has thousands of community water systems, only a few dozen wholesale water to others. The proposed regulation charges wholesalers on both water produced and finished water received from other water systems. The use of the total production as a basis for the wholesale water fees is problematic for a few reasons I'll describe. A first concern is that wholesale production varies widely from year to year. Over the last 10 years, Metropolitan's average production ranged from 300 to 500 billion gallons per year. Under the proposed fee, this ranges from $400,000 to $700,000, and that would be difficult to plan for or budget. These highly fluctuating fees run counter to the Water Board's goal of a stable revenue. Second, some water wholesalers serve as intermediaries who obtain their water from others before distributing onward. For example, treated water from Metropolitan Water District flows to Cuyagus Municipal Water District, then on to Port Huinimi Water Authority, then on to the city of Port Huinimi, who retails the water to consumers. When the water is sold and resold, an embedded regulatory fee of more than 30 cents per connection is added at each step effectively. A fee based solely on volumetric flow charges consumers multiple times for the same treated water. Third, wholesale agencies vary widely in the complexity of their systems and services provided. provided. Some treat ground and surface water supplies and distribute the water vast distances through complex networks. Others primarily pass finished water from flange to flange with little need for oversight. A volumetric fee neglects these fundamental differences in the public water systems. In contrast, a fee-for-service has inherent advantages. First, it's simple to administer, and it's equitable. By requiring that wholesale systems pay for the service they receive, the drinking water program will recover their full cost of oversight and will not double charge the consumer. Second, it ensures greater revenue stability, as the regulatory effort is more consistently based on the system's complexity rather than the volume of water delivered as it varies each year. Although Metropolitan supports fee relief for severely disadvantaged communities, it does require a thoughtful balance between financial relief and equitable fees. A fee-for-service structure for wholesale systems with perhaps an additional charge to support fee relief for disadvantaged communities is consistent with your objective of adopting fees which are equitable, simple to understand and administer, produce stable revenue, and are adaptable to changing circumstances. Thank you for the opportunity to comment, and I do appreciate working with staff on this fee regulation. Thank you.
Followed by Mr. Hawks, followed by Cyrus Devers from the Municipal Water District of Orange County.
Morning, Chair Marcus and Vice Chair Spivey Weber. My name is Francois Rodigari, and I'm with San Jose Water Company. I'm the Director of Water Quality and Environmental Services. I appreciate the opportunity to provide comments to you this morning, and generally speaking, I want to say that San Jose Water Company supports making the drinking water program whole, and we are concerned, however, with the linear approach that is proposed in the draft for your regulation. And this is because with this linear approach, as it was pointed out this morning, quickly the fee structure develops a disconnect between the level of service and oversight that will be provided and the fees paid. For example, for San Jose Water Company, last year, we received about 467 hours of regulatory oversight and consulting from the Division of Drinking Water, and we were billed $71,000 for those services at the rate of $153 per hour. If one projects the new fee that would be imposed on San Jose Water Company, we will be billed $440,000, and for the same number of hours, that equates to hourly rate of $945 per hour, which in my mind clearly highlights that at some point there is a lack of a relationship between the fee, the services provided and the fees paid. Because of that, we do support the Aqua solution of the water, the water community option, because it more equitably distributes the fees among all utilities. We do understand that smaller utilities probably need some subsidy, and we support that, but we do not support the current structure as proposed because of the distortions that it creates. More importantly, I think we are concerned that we may lose some accountability. Under the old system of fee-for-service, it was more of a relationship of a consultant agreement, if you will, and we had a privileged relationship with the Division of Drinking Water, where certainly we would be regulated, but we also could turn to them for help, for consulting, and they would bill us for those services, and they were naturally inclined to be responsive to our needs, because they could charge us for those services. Under the new structure, depending how priorities are allocated, they may or may not be as much available under the, with the new system, and we're concerned about that. So we propose that at the very least, if fee-for-service is eliminated, which it probably will be, that they, that there will be something put in place in terms of accounting, so that each community water service will be provided on an annual basis, a statement of time spent on the system for what activities, and that's an important thing, particularly for investor-owned utilities, where we would tend to capitalize those type of services for a specific capital project, and so it's good accounting practice, and it provides clarity to the rate payers and the public. We also support the adoption of performance standards, so we would encourage that the board adopts or encourages the Division of Drinking Water to adopt performance standards in terms of turnaround time for reviews, permit amendments, new permits, number of sanitary surveys that a system is expected to receive, so that we have clarity as to what we should be getting for our fees, and we have an accounting of those services. So with that, and I have, I'm also late for my comments, they'll be finalized this afternoon and sent in, so I'll have the details of what I just described, but that concludes my testimony. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Always a pleasure. Mr. Hawks, followed by Mr. Devers. Okay, Mr. Devers, you're followed by Mr. Devers, because you're talking for somebody Only if you start your second one by saying "and now" for something completely different, then it's all right.
Okay. Thank you, Chair Marcus, Vice Chair Spivey Weber, Jack Hawks, California Water Association, on behalf of the PUC, Regulated Water Utilities. My comments replicate basically everything you've heard so far, especially Mr. Rodigari's. The disconnect that occurs leaving the fee-for-service approach is not insignificant. And as Francois indicated with San Jose Water Company, and that's the most extreme example amongst our member companies, this problem of the hours of regulatory oversight that our member companies have had required in the past and have been provided in the past, those hourly rates are going to dramatically increase for virtually, for our 14 largest members. We are, in our comment letter this afternoon, we're going to spell out many of the things that Mr. Rodigari mentioned with respect to the accounting procedures. It's particularly important for our members as, under a rate of return regulation, to be able to assign as appropriate some of these expenses to the capital projects that the, that the Division of Drinking Water will inspect, because that'll be cheaper in the long run for our customers to do it that way, as opposed to exposing, expensing the entire mountain, you know, in a single year. We're very interested in some kind of an annual, you know, reporter, accounting, perhaps akin to the Safe Drinking Water Annual Reports, you know, on the drinking water program that will spell out. I think that will help on the accountability issue. And then finally, on considering for the future rate increase, fee increases, excuse me, I got rates on the mind here, the same things that Francois was talking about in terms of considering turnaround time on processing variances in waivers and turnaround time on inspection, and final permitting of some of these capital items like tanks, wells, and other facilities, that kind of thing, so. We, CWA at this point supports the intent of the water community option. We're actually going to have a conference call at the conclusion of this hearing to finalize our thoughts on that. Unfortunately, not all of our members will benefit equally under, the way San Jose Water will under the, under the, that option, so we're still considering that. Thank you.
Have you had a chance to read the Aqua, the early submission of, from Aqua?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Everybody's got it on their desk, and we're, yeah. And final thanks to the staff also.
Oh, thank you.
It has been an extraordinarily productive coordination and interface with the staff over the last 16 months, I guess it's been, so thank you.
Thank you, Cyrus Devers, the best, best and greatest, and I will comply with your request, even though it's going to date both of us when I do. But, so speaking for the Municipal Water District of Orange County first, they did submit written comments. They asked me to emphasize something that's not in the letter, which is broadly their experience that they're seeing in Orange County as a representative of the entire county. Their area covers everything from very, very large districts down to less than 10,000. And as they look across that, what they're seeing is under the proposed drinking water fee program, very disparate impacts and very large increases across the board, and very different abilities to absorb those increases. So they are here to support the water community alternative, as that is not a, kind of a linear response to just the number of connections, but incorporates the economies of scale that tend to dampen out the wide swings that they're seeing between the districts. Substantive fairness is, of course, what we all strive for, but as public agencies, we also need to have a perceived fairness in there. So these disparate impacts are creating a perception of unfairness, and they seek a program which is more, appears to be more rational and more related to the actual cost put upon the program. So really, it's that, it was to emphasize the, really, a wide range of impacts across the county. And now for something completely different.
Thank you.
I even did it in character, thank you. So switching now to Helix, Helix Water District, which could not be farther from a county-wide wholesale district, is in fact a retail agency in the 50,000 to 60,000 connection range. Their comment, they have also submitted written comments, they support the water community alternative. The general manager asked me to express in addition to that, though, to consider that these are happening within a larger context, this fee increase and change in the program. They have just come through an extraordinarily difficult time, where they've had to increase rates as a result of conservation. It was the, it was related to me, this was the single most unpopular thing they've ever faced in 25 years, when they had to increase rates. In addition to that, there are other fees that are going up at the same time. So the total impact, should this be adopted as proposed, their total increases from year to year would be in excess of about a quarter million dollars. Now, this is a district in the 50,000 to 60,000 connection range, so they don't have the budget alternatives that perhaps a much larger district, you know, could manipulate within the budget. They're, you know, they're going to take this right on the chin, in other words. So they ask you to place this within the larger context, and they support the water community alternative, as it will merely double their current fees. They come in with a higher fee base than, for various reasons, than similarly sensuated districts, but even so, the alternative will double their fees. Because they start out higher, they will not experience the 1,000% increase that others of similar size are experiencing, but they would in fact be several hundred percent higher under the proposed fee program. So the message broadly is, please place this in context in the experience we've been through the last few years, which has been really difficult. Thank you.
Next, Asha Krailing from the Community Water Center. Welcome back.
Maybe we should have just done a full drinking water day and done something we did yesterday today, but it's that workshop distinction. Sorry to make you-
I don't mind coming back.
Okay, good.
Thank you. Good morning, Asha Krailing with Community Water Center. We'll be submitting our letter today, but I'll cover our main points now. We supported changing the fee structure in last year's May revised trailer bill, and we support the structure seeing it now. The current fee model makes it extremely difficult for the drinking water program to plan its own budget, fund needed policy and regulatory updates, and address the needs of small water systems. We believe that not only will the new fee structure allow the state water board to set fees which better represent the costs of the program and thus allow the board to more efficiently serve all water systems, but this proposal would reduce fees for most of Californians, small water systems, which are the systems most likely to struggle to pay the costs of maintaining a water system, including payment of fees to the Division of Drinking Water. My colleagues have met with some of the larger agencies that are here today, who are proposing an alternative fee structure, and we've seen improvements in that and appreciate the effort to provide an alternative, and we hope to continue working together so that we can reduce concerns and all feel comfortable about the new fee structure. Thank you.
That concludes our speaker cards. Thank you for the, obviously, robust set of conversations you've had, so that everybody didn't feel the need to come in today. Any further questions?
Some comments based on what I've heard. One, just my, my personal bias, my personal problem is with the use of the word "small systems." Not, small systems are not the same as disadvantaged systems. Some small systems are quite rich. And so at some point, not this year, but at some point, I'd like for us to look a little bit further into the small system approach, because I suspect that there are at least a few of those small systems that really could pay more. Secondly, I, I'm sorry. Sure.
Water Association, you're absolutely right. We, we need to sort out small systems, disadvantaged communities, severely disadvantaged communities, but we also have to take into account that the large systems have severely disadvantaged communities and disadvantaged communities within their service areas. So even, even Francois's company, he's got, you know, he's got Silicon Valley, and he's also got disadvantaged communities within that, that his company serves. We've got to figure out a way to, you're right, account for these small systems under all these different ramifications. I agree with you, so.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And I, so I just wanted to put that out as a marker for, for the future, because I do think that that's something that's, that's important. Secondly, I'd like to hear from, from the legal side. With the proposal that was made by Aqua and that was supported at various levels by a number of the speakers, are we talking 15 days or 45 days in terms of re-noticing?
I don't think we've made a final-
If any.
I don't think we've made a final determination yet on it. Looking at it, I can see arguments for both approaches, but it is a fairly significant change, and so, again, I'd want to spend more time analyzing it, but my initial take is that we are likely to be in a 45-day scenario with it. But that conclusion could change the more I kind of compare and contrast, and it could be that there's a way to sort of harmonize the two that may push us closer to the 15-day route. Either way, you know, the board is accustomed to working in the realm of state policy for water quality control, where there is a little bit more flexibility in making changes without having to renotice the package even for the 15 days. You may recall Ms. Spivey Weber with the once-through-cooling policy, for example. Had we been in the APA realm for rulemaking like we are with this drinking water fee proposal, that would have had to have gone out for, at a minimum, a 15-day further notice before the board could act, so. So we'll certainly look at it, confer with some of the stakeholders if necessary, and then advise the division and then the board appropriately on it.
There are ongoing conversations between some of the stakeholders that hopefully are going to happen within this week, so.
Yes.
It may not, yeah, you may, there may be other options.
And, and the third, the third observation is that this issue of fee-for-service, I know a lot of people really love fee-for-service. I personally do not, particularly for drinking water, because drinking water is a health-based issue, and whether a system is, you know, humming along, if a nearby system is failing, that's a problem for that, that community. And so that is a message that perhaps needs to be honed and, and, and worked, you know, delivered to, to fee payers, that this is, that this is somewhat different. And, and so I, I encourage, I definitely would not want to go back to fee-for-service personally, and, and I do think that there's a solid health-based reason for not doing that. Thank you.
People do travel and- People do travel and drink water all over the state of California. Yeah, everybody does really have an interest in a strong program. But thank you for raising that accounting issue from the perspective, not just of inquiring minds, but of how you recover your rate. So hopefully, there'll be a conversation about how we can deal with that. But, yeah, thank you. I was just going to say, without an opinion, that, you know, the whole principle of moving to this is moving to the same way of running a program that we do in other systems that allows us to run a program that's good for all Californians, which is in the interest of all water agencies, even if we don't spend time with them a lot. There's a much bigger value to water systems on having a strong and robust, safe drinking water program, that is a third-party validator and someone that gives public confidence. And in fact, I think it's actually in the interest of water agencies for our program to be as big and as robust as it can possibly be, because you can never have enough assurance of public health and safety on behalf of the customer. You never know when you're the one who's going to need all the help and all the advice, so it's definitely not something to scrimp on. But how we do it is what the conversation is here, but the proposal is a totally different model. Know it's hard for people to let go of, and very much appreciate you giving us a reason other than sentiment or short-term bottom-line thinking as to why you need to know certain things. That was very helpful today. With that, thank you all for your time, not just today, but leading up to today and in the weeks to come. Appreciate it. I mean, together, this really has to be a community broadly writ approach to having the best darn drinking water program in the country, if not the world, which is the goal. All right, with that, counsel. All right. With that, I formally, you know, APA, different rules. I feel like I should wear different clothes or a hat. The hearing is now closed, and the meeting is adjourned until our next regularly scheduled meeting. Thank you all for joining us, and enjoy the farmer's market, which for once, you'll have a chance to go to.